Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exit, which is to your left of this room. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs and do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of record and minutes, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. This is not, this is a public meeting, but there is no public input tonight, so some of that is superfluous information, other than the applicant who will be asked questions and answers. The Board will follow the items in the order that they appear in the agenda, extra copies of which are near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or the representative shall come to the podium, identify her or himself, give his or her address, and then present their case. Again, that's superfluous information, I think. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. This case is a public hearing. It will be open for public input, which it won't, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the Board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions to the Board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed, public input. The Board will then move on to a decision. No further input is allowed at this point. Again, like I said, this is a continuation of a meeting from three weeks ago. At that time, we didn't have enough information for which to make any findings on the application. But Michelle, if you will, would you introduce the case before us? At which time, I would like to have Larry give us a brief introduction, and then followed by the town attorney. And then, planning board, we will begin to discuss the Seeker application, all right? At which point, after the Seeker application, we will begin to talk about the merits of the application and the documentation that we were going to...
Thank you. Items for Board action: subdivision and site plan, case number PB 1201-3, upon the matter of request by TY Lin International acting as agent for Mike Nolan, I Square LLC, for subdivision approval and preliminary and final site plan approval to redevelop properties bounded by Titus Avenue, Stranahan Park, and Grange Place. The proposal includes abandonment of Union Park and extension of Cooper Road to the south to intersect with Stranahan Park, redevelopment of the area to include seven mixed-use two- and three-story buildings built in phases totaling plus or minus 87,200 square feet, shared parking, landscaping, common gathering space, and other related improvements on premises 633, 651, 667, 679, 687, and 691 Titus Avenue, numbers 3, 4, 11, 12, 20, and 28, Union Park, 5 and 11, Stranahan Park, and tax account numbers 076.15-6-12 and 076.15-6-23 in a mixed-use commercial district.
I'm going to digress for a moment, and then have Larry speak. I know everyone's here very interested in what's going on. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the process to which we've been undertaking. Everyone may or may not be aware, but I Square is in a special use district called the mixed-use commercial district, which has a special ordinance associated with it in our town code and a special process. So where Mr. Nolan has been undergoing, I suppose, what has been deemed as bureaucracy, it is pretty much the straightforward process to which an applicant goes before us when being reviewed under this district. Additionally to this, there is an entire booklet that has been written called the Titus-Cooper-Hudson Town Center Design Guidelines, which is basically a document that outlines the development and what should be contained within the property, how it should be developed, and what we should be looking at when we have an application come before us. When any applicant comes before us, there's a checklist called the Site Plan Review Submit Checklist. There's a section A, B, and C, which contains six items under section A, 26 items under section B, and 10 items under section C. That is a uniform document for all site plan reviews. In addition to that, as I said before, we have the requirements of the Titus-Cooper-Hudson Town Center Design Guidelines. This is not an insignificant amount of work. Mr. Nolan and his team of architects, engineers, and I'm sure attorneys at this point have undertaken a great deal of work to get to the point where I believe Larry's going to update us as to the status of the application. There are certain things that we just can't do without having certain documents within our hands, and that was where we were at at the last meeting. I certainly think that great progress has been made over this week, last few weeks. I know I've been privy to many of these. So we're very optimistic tonight, and looking forward to hopefully the conclusion of a phase of this project. At which point, Larry, I would like you just to go over the materials to which we received. I know we received some that I just see tonight that we were anticipating, and just tell me a little bit about the status of some of the items on that checklist.
Okay. Well, let me, for the people in the audience, or those people that are watching on television, kind of give a little bit of an overview of the three major blocks that the Board has The first thing is that this is a subdivision approval, and Mike Nolan has purchased numerous parcels, and a licensed surveyor basically is combining those parcels into one big parcel, if you will. And then, when Union Park is relocated 85 feet to the east, that big parcel is going to be resubdivided into new parcels that will have his new buildings sitting in those parcels, because you can't have buildings sitting over old lot lines. So that's, we'll call it a housekeeping issue with licensed surveyors and the Mono County Clerk's office, but if anything was happening, the Board would have to give approval, subdivision approval. Part of moving Union Park is that there are two owners that abut Union Park. One of them is Mike Nolan and I Squared, and the other one is the House Guitars. And one of the issues that we've had is that the House Guitars has about 200 feet of property abutting the existing Union Park right-of-way, and that adds value to their property. And if any of you currently have access to your home from a dedicated town road, if the town told you that road was no longer going to be dedicated, and it would be owned by a developer, and you had to deal with the developer, not the town of Aronacoit, you would feel that your property values were being impacted. So it's our understanding that along with the town, I Squared, and the House Guitars, there are several ways of making this work, and it's our understanding that a tacit agreement has been reached for that. That was probably the stickiest wicket going on here, because the other two were that to move the intersection of Union Park from the T that it is now to making a four-way with Cooper, it makes perfect sense. It's a much cleaner, much more efficient intersection. But just like the structural design of a building, a traffic impact analysis had to be done that showed how many cars coming south on Cooper today would want to go straight down the new road, how many would want to turn left, what the cycle times of the lights had to be, how long the stacking lanes had to be, so at 7:30 in the morning or at 4:30 in the afternoon, we didn't have a traffic mess. And part and parcel of that was the original proposal of the road was, the new road was one lane going in and one lane going out. And one of the questions that the county had was, should there be two lanes going out, one dedicated to left turns, one dedicated to straight through and right? And that's what the traffic simulation did, is documented that the plans are acceptable to the county. The impact analysis was submitted on January 30th after the last meeting, and the county, we requested to the county that they really move this along, and we received, in fact, I received the original in today's mail, but we received their review letter last week, Thursday, via email, and they concurred with the traffic analysis and the design that is on paper. The third block was the drainage study, which I received Friday afternoon, and as I had indicated to Bob Kiefer, who you'll hear later tonight, a very, very highly qualified engineer that Mike retained with TY Lin, is there is the existing condition, what happens when a half-inch of rain falls? What will happen if this was like Henrietta, very clay, we didn't have the colony sand that Aronacoit has? And the third case is using dry wells and infiltration into the sand, what will be the impact of this project? And using the dry wells, the amount of runoff from the site will be less than what is currently experienced today, so essentially, that's clean and green on the drainage study. So again, the House Guitars, the traffic study, the drainage study. Other than the subdivision approval, moving the road also means moving the sanitary sewer and moving the water main. Both of those things have to be designed by licensed engineers, of which Bob Kiefer is one. They have to be reviewed by Mono County Health Department. The Water Authority is reviewed by Mono County Water Authority. And the sanitary sewer will be dedicated to the town of Aronacoit Department of Public Works. The water main will be dedicated to Mono County Water Authority. So that just in itself would be a planning board approval that wraps in along with the subdivision approval. Lastly, there's the overall site plan that shows the seven proposed buildings, which will be built over the period of approximately three to four years, with central parking lots and the associated parking, so there's enough parking for the downstairs use and the upstairs use, and the upstairs use being a mixed use of apartments and commercial. This is going to be a 24/7 place where people live, work, and play. And so we are looking at a preliminary overall site plan, and then a final site plan for building number one, the parking associated with building number one, and the new Cooper Road extension, Union Park, that will serve these. So those are all of the planets that were in orbit, and until everything kind of settled down in its place, three weeks ago, the Board could not take any action. And now, I think we're at the point where action can be taken. And just for point of reference, I believe it was August or early September that this Board approved the LA Fitness Project. We just received the MyLARS for sign-off for that project, so after the Board grants an approval on something, there are other things that need to happen, like the Health Department, like the Water Authority, like the Mono County Clerk, that gets a project into the starting gate. How's that?
Thank you. Mr. O'Reilly, do you want to have any introductions?
I hadn't expected, but maybe because we want to be thorough, let me just re-explain what I know everybody on the Board knows, but it might be helpful for everybody to understand. I've spoken to all of the Board members individually and in preparation. What you're considering tonight amongst other things is a site plan review. You Board members have a number of considerations pursuant to section 274A of the town law, things like that were alluded to by Larry, parking, means of access, the screening, the signage, the landscaping, the architectural features, the protection of the adjacent land uses. Those are all, but not all of the considerations that you would make in arriving at your site plan approval. One of the things I talked about was the adjacent site plant, or the adjacent properties, and as Larry alluded to, the one property that is touched by this particular project, it's my understanding that we've reached an agreement. I don't know that that agreement has been absolutely memorialized, although it is not a public input component this evening. I think it would behoove the Board to invite Mr. Sadati, who represents the House of Guitars, to go through that agreement with the Board, and then it would certainly be appropriate, legal, and lawful for you to make an approval subject to the memorialization of the agreement that's presented to you this evening. The other thing you're going to consider this evening is the subdivision that Larry talked about, and again, under Town Law Section 276, basically, your review is to consider whether or not that subdivision, the capilation of those parcels represents adequate facilities for the housing, transportation, distribution, comfort, convenience, safety, health, and welfare of the community. You want to make sure it works, that it makes sense, and I think that you've received a significant amount of material. Another area that is outstanding, and I might as well touch on it, and hopefully I don't need to say anything else, is the component of green space requirement that is included in this Muck District. And after evaluating the presentations that were made and the conclusions that were reached, I think I can advise you comfortably, as your legal advisor, that you can incorporate both the private and the public green space that exists in this entire parcel, because basically, it's a single use, it's contiguous property, and it wouldn't be inappropriate to make that consideration in arriving at whether or not the green space requirement has been met. But even additionally, since this is a project that is going to be phased in, again, a condition of an approval that you would make would simply be compliance with the green space requirement, up until in the eventuality of the final phase, compliance would have to be met. And I'm not going to make a suggestion that this would happen, but if it should get to the sixth or the seventh or the third or the fourth phase, however they're characterized, and the green space still needed compliance, it may very well be that there might not be some sort of mechanical development on that last parcel, but it would be left green to comply. But again, I feel very comfortable advising you legally that you would be within your proper grounds to just make that a condition, that it be complied with over the course of the phasing in, in this particular project. We talked about the C-COR component, the state environmental quality review, and that simply is a consideration as to whether or not there would be any significant environmental impact. This appears to be a type one, that there may be, and again, it is at the Board's discretion whether or not you find that there is, it's a negative declaration, in other words, that there would not be. It would probably make sense to do your C-COR first, before you get into the nuts and the bolts of the project, just from a comfortable standpoint. And I think lastly, Larry and I have spent a lot of time talking about, and I commend Larry, thank you very much for everything you've done in my absence over the course of the last week. You do have before you a resolution, and again, it's only a sample document, because in speaking with the Board, it appeared that everybody, I think everybody here has been on record more than once indicating that you are favorably inclined towards this particular presentation. So what we did was prepare a form resolution that incorporated the components that are required alongside that favorable inclination. Again, please don't imply or take that I'm making any recommendation one way or the other. It was simply meant to assist and enhance you. I think finally, you've ultimately received the C-COR information, the environmental assessment form, which I know you're probably going to talk about. You've received from Larry an evaluation of the I-Square drainage program, and in each one of those components, I think the summary in there is that the drainage design is acceptable, and you've got the Department of Transportation study, which likewise indicates that the recommendations, or that the, with regard to how this road is going to be laid out, meets with the criteria that the county is interested in having it meet with. So ultimately, depending upon how you accept the veracity of all this information that's been submitted to you over these many months, if you're inclined to find it to be reasonable and acceptable regarding the health, safety, and welfare of our community, I would tell you that you have a sufficient amount of information to legally, favorably pass on this matter.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lastly, I would just like to add that this Board did not create the rules and regulations associated with this district. Can we just go and follow the rules and regulations that are put before us? I have heard people say that they would love us to rubber-stamp this project. We review every project equally and completely. We never, in my history here, reviewed any application with any bias. And just many people that are adamantly in favor of this project, there are completely another group of people that are fervently opposed to other projects within this city, within this town. And we need to review applications uniformly and completely, and that is the way it goes. At which point, I would like to open it up to review on the Seeker application presented before us.
Mr. Chairman, if I could start with that. I reviewed the Seeker application, and I just wanted to make one amendment to it if I could. I don't think that we have to, I don't think it's going to change anything, but under page five of 21B, description, under G, maximum vehicular trips generated per hour, it says plus or minus 191, and in the traffic study that we got, the maximum was 218, so I just moved to amend the 617-20, full environmental assessment form, item B, project description under G, from 191 to 218.
So amended?
Would it help if we made the reference to, then updated?
Yes. Can I have one of your pencils, please?
Sure.
You gave me the dull one. That was, what was that number again, Jay?
B dot one dot G.
218, so amended.
It's on page, page five of 21, halfway down the page.
Ma'am Goodman.
With that amendment, do we have to vote on that amendment before we?
No.
I don't think we do.
The number doesn't really change the order of magnitude.
No, no, it doesn't. That's why I just wanted to get it so that it was consistent with the report that we got for traffic study.
Just additionally, so everyone's aware, we received this at the last meeting, right before the meeting. We've had an opportunity to review this offline. It was turned in in the past, there were some amendments made to it. Larry's done some work on it, the Board has made some reviews, and submitted those. Larry, so as this may seem like an abbreviated review to everyone in the public, it's been reviewed internally.
So, Mr. Chairman, then, in the matter of PB 1201-3, with respect to the C-COR, this is a type one action, and I move negative declaration?
I have some other questions, Mr. Ritchie, prior to...
Yeah, I have a question too.
Really? Okay. You can ask. No, I think we're taking the motion off the table, and we're continuing. I should have, I meant to go around, and I didn't realize you were going to just step into that, but I would like to have Rich, if you would make any comments or inputs that you have.
I have no questions.
Ray, I have an opportunity to address the Seeker application.
I would. I'd like to address on page seven of 21. Does project involve state, local, or federal funding? It says yes. Various green infrastructure grants will be applied for. I'd like to know if any other grants, tax abatements and so forth will be applied for, and...
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that page?
It is, seven of 21.
Thank you.
And I'd like to know if those grants or abatements, or whatever it might be, that have been applied for, would affect progress on the particular project. And also, on page 18 of 21, number 17...
Let's address one at a time before...
Okay, excuse me, I still need to jump ahead.
Go back to page seven.
Okay.
Ray, did you pull your microphone to your face?
I did. It's about as close as I can get. Maybe the mic...
Stay together, please.
Well, your mic is up in the air, so why don't you pull yours to your face?
Grace.
I'm curious. It says, does, page seven of 21, number 24, it says, does project involve state, local, or federal funding? It's marked yes. It says, if yes, explain. Various green energy infrastructure grants will be applied for. I'm curious if any other grants or tax abatements would be applied for, and if they were and not granted, would it impugn or affect progress on the particular project, especially as it relates to what we have called Phase One? That's what I'm curious.
Yes, sure.
Good evening, Board. Mike Nolan, 350 Kings Highway North. To answer your question, Mr. McDowell, no, we were, the state grant that we applied for, for the green technologies was declined or not awarded. We do not currently have any other applications outstanding that would affect Phase One.
Are there any other, is there any anticipation for tax abatements, other grants?
Yes, we do plan to pursue other things, but nothing that will hold up or delay the project or cause us to take anything that we've shown off the table.
Okay. The reason I ask also is because some of those grants do affect, you know, from the tax perspective, et cetera.
Right.
What have you applied for, just out of curiosity?
At this point, we only applied for the green infrastructure grant, which was for stormwater management, and it was for the storage of underwater rain harvesting, pervious surfaces, a number of other things, but that was not awarded. They did not award any state grants in that, in the first round of the grants, no private developments were awarded at all. It all went municipal.
You said that there were, you might anticipate applying for other ones? Anything in particular that you'd like to share?
Not at this point. We don't have any, we would have to, depends on how it would apply to each building as we go through it, if there are some that are available. There's all different program opportunity notices that come out from this, for the different state programs. As they come out, we're monitoring them to see which ones would apply to I-Square, and there's certainly a possibility, I'm not aware of any specific one that we are prepping for now, no.
It's certainly right to do so, and there's a lot of different programs, you know, thinking favorably to a degree, especially as it relates to tax abatement over the course of time. Have you...
Yes, we're hoping to pursue that. We haven't got all the numbers and everything figured out to be able to make any applications in that light right now, but mostly what we're building today will be dedicated to the town, really won't come into the tax play.
Okay. All right. Thank you, by the way.
Anything else, Ray?
Yes, and page...
I have a question on that, internal question here.
Sure.
It's a 24. Mr. Nolan answered a yes, but based on what he, what he just said, should that be a no answer? Since he's already, was turned down, and the project doesn't involve local, state, or federal funding...
It does have a chance of being approved in the second round.
Why don't you just, I'm sorry, just stay up at the book thing right now, I guess. I think it's the best tactic, and then you can address the microphone.
No problem. I can stay here if you'd like. There is a, there is a second wave of those same applications being reviewed at the end of February, and there is possibility that it could be awarded, and that, we're not given a lot of promise on it, because it's this very, very competitive grant program. But so the, I think the answer still should remain yes, because that technically still could be awarded, but it was really more to do with buildings, the stage building and that, as far as affecting what you're approving tonight.
Mr. Palermo, I think another component that probably makes that an accurate answer, and a justification for leaving it, is I recall at a seminar that many of us attended in Batavia, one of the observations by the state presenters was that when these application forms are prepared, they're kind of prepared for a single idea or a single component, and they don't incorporate, because they're hard copy, they don't incorporate every eventuality or possibility. So this is probably an example of a situation where you could have elaborated more, but it would probably be best just to keep it the way it is, knowing that there's going to be a potential for other applications. And in fact, Mr. Kiefer and I had a conversation about, there was a thought of encumbering the different parking lots so that everybody could use all the parking lots regardless of how the property was ultimately distributed in the future, and Mr. Kiefer, I think correctly in context of this particular answer as well, pointed out that as they progress through the different phases, there may be applications that might not even exist today, that would be building by building, phase by phase. So it's probably best left alone.
You say leave it alone, but couldn't we just say something safely, like there is the possibility for further applications?
I think you could put that in the record. That was the answer, and that's the correct answer.
Yeah.
But that's what, it's exactly what it says now.
I know.
Basically, it says various grants, various green energy infrastructure grants will be applied for.
Well, I want to remove the green energy infrastructure, because that, that would open them up to other things. I mean, that, I don't want to tie them into just that.
And in fact, I would, I would agree with Mike. I think that ties them into specifically, but there may be other grants, for example, like we talked before, like I just mentioned, there could be tax...
I don't know how that impacts the environmental...
I don't know either.
This is not just green. This is all funding sources.
This is all funding source.
We're striking the green energy infrastructure from the, I mean, if he goes for Comida or whatever, I would certainly think that that would be...
Is there any intention, Mike, to do, to do some of those things? Is there any intention, Mike, to do, to do some of those things?
I would think so, yes.
At some point on the road that you would be looking for a Comida-type?
Yes.
Project? Okay. All right. So I think we should probably leave it checked as is, but various green infrastructure grants and others, perhaps?
I think just striking it out, and various grants and will, and funding sources will be applied for, so.
Okay, um-
It's the way it is currently reading.
And others.
Yes.
I think, leave it open-ended, perhaps, for a lot of other grants or whatever might come forth. On page 18 of 21, under noise and odor impact, number 17, will there be objectional odor, excuse me, will there be objectionable odors, noise, or vibration as a result of the proposed action? Nothing's checked. No or yes is not checked on that particular-
It probably should have been yes, because he does have, um, a few of the, of the, um, items below it checked.
Correct.
Sorry to get him, Ray, page number?
Uh, page number 18 of 21, Mr. Chairman, item 17. Yes.
I'll apologize for that. For people in the audience and on television, the CICRA long form for type one actions is 21 pages, and the first, uh, nine, 10 pages is all project description, which is filled out by the applicant, um, or his, uh, I'll say his engineer, project engineer. Parts two and three are actually done by the town, by Development Review. And under 17, um, the reason that wasn't checked yes is when I went through this and, and gave it back to Anthony, I thought that the odors, more than one per day, and the ambient noise would actually not fall into column two, potentially large, but they would be a small to moderate. So in fact, they wouldn't require the part three dissertation. And again, for those people in the audience or those out in, um, basically you go through these impacts of impact on land, just for example, and is, will a construction last more than a year? And the answer is, in this case, yes, it's going to last three years. There's no way to change it. It's normal, and it actually, we feel would be less detrimental to have a controlled process than try to get all this done in one year. That would just be utter chaos. So the potential impact is not significant. And so the things that, that come up in the part two were impact on land, impact on water, which had to do with the drainage, impact on open space and recreation, which is actually a positive impact, impact on transportation, which is why we required the traffic study. The noise and the odor, um, I did have someone come in about nine months ago that was thinking of building a barbecue, doing a barbecue restaurant elsewhere in the town, and they wondered if the neighbors would have a problem being downwind of a, of a Beale Street or a dinosaur. Um, impact on growth and character of community and neighborhood, and obviously there will be, but we consider that positive. And so that, for people out there, that's why we're going through this form, is that the board has taken a hard look at the potential impacts. Thanks. I think with any project, there's noise and odor impacts, and whether they're mitigatable, which in most cases they are, um, unless we're building an incinerator or something to that effect, which we're not. Thank you for moving those.
I think it's, it's, it's relevant to note, too, I think, Larry, that in you, in your comments on that CICRA form, in each of those subcategories, your conclusion was that the potential impact is not significant.
Right. And, and again, for those members in the audience, when the county was building the mill seat landfill out in Riga, the people who are downwind of the landfill, that noise and odor, um, would be something that might be a little different, but of course, that's also in an agricultural area, and they could be downwind of a dairy farm, so, or a pig farm. So, you know, it all, all depends on the context of where this is happening.
Larry, I just wanted to make sure that, you know, it was complete going forward, and that's why I said that, but I think you've done a great job putting this together.
And what most people are seeing are the things that go on in the workshops, so if this seems very boring and very eye-doting and t-crossing, it's usually not on TV. Ray, anything else you'd like to add?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mike's job, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you.
You know, um, I think I've, I've gotten the explanation for most I need here.
All right. Thank you.
Mark.
Question, just number 15. I know we have the traffic study, but, uh, there's a question that's unanswered. Proposed action will result in major traffic problems.
Page, please.
Oh, page 18.
Thank you. The answer they questioned, according to the traffic impact analysis, is no, correct?
Yes, it will actually be a better situation.
So the answer to the question should be, will small to moderate impact, but it is mitigatable, or is it not checked because there's no impact?
Right. Uh, it's not checked because there's really no impact.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Mark?
Nothing further.
Bernie, anything relating to the CICRA application?
Yeah, on part one, page nine, question number nine, says that the proposed action is a subdivision of land. How many lots are proposed? Oh, I'm sorry. I believe it, it says three on here, but I believe it's supposed to be four, according to the latest map.
Larry, could you just confirm that, or I'll bring out my drawing. I believe it's four is what it makes.
Four. And then, just one more question on the A part. On the maps I'm looking at, it shows for, uh, I'm not sure which left number that is. It says for the minimum lot size, I see a 5,000 square foot building, but I don't see the square footage for the green space. So is that where the 7,315 comes from? For the minimum? What is the minimum lot size proposed?
Is 7,315 correct, Bob?
Part one, page nine. It would be lot three, looks like what it's referring to.
7,315.
Uh, Robert Kiefer, professional engineer with offices at 255 East Avenue. Uh, your first comment with regards to the number of lots that are proposed in the subdivision, four is the correct number. And with regards to the minimum lot size, I believe that the 7,315 square feet reflects the, the size of the smallest lot.
Is that lot three?
Yes.
Yes.
Very good.
Say, lot three?
Yeah. And again, for the board and the public, this question is typically aimed at a residential subdivision. If you're doing a hundred lot subdivision, they want to know that the minimum lot size meets their town code. In the case of Ronda Quaid for residential, it'd be 9,600 square feet. So that's, you know, this is, one form fits all. Now, Jay, I know you began to make a motion, which, unless someone else wants to jump in, I will let you continue to make the motion, but we've already formulated a motion, which I think you have a copy of, correct, for the CICRA? Does everyone have a copy, or do I, am I the only one?
Yeah, I have a copy of that.
All right. So I would like to make sure that we, you know, just, this negative declaration and findings are all-
Is that what came to me?
-stated as part of the-
Okay.
I don't think we, it just made, you know, I just wanted to mention that the state of facts are on this neg deck.
Right, okay.
Notice of determination of non-significance.
So for project, I'm, I'm just going to do what I did before, then. The project number PB 1201 dash three, um, regarding State Environmental Quality Review Act, um, this is a type one action, and I move a negative declaration.
Second.
I'm going to do a roll call. Ritchie.
Aye.
Aye.
Lucas.
McDonald.
Aye.
Thank you. Palermo.
Aye, but why are you doing a roll call?
Why not?
I don't know. Why don't we treat-
Gunther.
Aye.
Weiner, aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. CICRA is approved. We can move on to all the rest of the matters in front. Maybe you'd like to give us a little presentation, then, just bring us up to speed on everything that's transpired in the last three weeks.
These are too much of a distraction.
They're building materials, coordination.
Good evening, again. Uh, Bob Kiefer, professional engineer with TY Lin International. Our offices are at, uh, 355 East Avenue in the city of Rochester. I'm joined this evening by Anthony Bellomo, another engineer planner that works with TY Lin. Uh, you've seen Wendy and Mike Nolan, the developers and owners of I Square. They're in the audience this evening also. Rob Meehan is the project architect, is here to address questions associated with the building and the building materials. Uh, Mr. Frank Sodoti, the attorney for the House of Guitars, is also, uh, present, and, uh, would be prepared to address the issues associated with access to the House of Guitars as a result of the abandonment of Union Park. And we have a representative from HIP, here this evening, Diane Sakarin, who is, uh, prepared to speak to, uh, their position with regards to this project complying with the, uh, the zoning code requirements. Uh, I'm not sure how much detail you would like to have, uh, with regards to the elements of the project that have changed in the last couple of weeks, or if you would like us to take a look at your, your being, uh, the chairman's, uh, review comment letter, and how we've addressed each of those items.
That'd be good.
Or, or specific questions from the board.
Why don't you start our letter, and then, uh-
We, we are in receipt of a letter dated 2/9/12 from the planning board chairman to, uh, the director of development services, Larry Henninger, and, uh, there's, uh, seven or eight points here. Uh, the first deals with the question of whether or not this project, uh, is in compliance with the goals of the, uh, zoning district. Uh, this document was reproduced with comments from the HIP organization, and I believe that you have this.
Correct.
Uh, this is dated February, uh, 2012. Uh, the, the conclusion is, is that this project, uh, closely complies with the goals of that district, and that, uh, is well presented as we have proposed it. Uh, item number two on this list, uh, deals with the question of pervious and impervious surfaces. Uh, one of the things that you asked us to do was to define very precisely what the limits of Phase One are, and in our drawing set, we've given you a site plan that shows the precise limits of Phase One. Basically, it is the building one, the parking that's immediately to the, uh, north of it, uh, the reconstruction of, uh, the Cooper Road extension, or the construction of Cooper Road extension, and the common parking lot that will be shared with the House of Guitars. Within those limits, there are essentially very little pervious surfaces. We are proposing to use our pervious surfaces in subsequent phases of this project. We are aware of the fact that there's a requirement that 5% of our total area has to be pervious. The second phase of this project, which will be the apartment building, building number two, is going to have more than enough green pervious area to comply with the 5% requirement.
What would we do if plans changed and, uh, along the line and-
We, we understand the risk of building Phase One with less than 5% pervious, on the potential impact that when we get to the final phase of the project, if we do not have 5% pervious total, that we could lose square footage and have to build impervious. But the intent is, is that we're going to have in excess of the 5% pervious because of green technologies that will be incorporated into subsequent buildings. And we were asking for your consideration with regards to-
Are you talking about roofs or pavement, or surface materials?
Both. Uh, uh, pervious areas on, on the surface of the ground, uh, possibly pervious pavements, possibly, uh, green lawn areas, possibly, uh, paving materials or, or surfaces that are, are pervious, and, and, and certainly the possibility of having green roof technology, uh, where we actually, uh, have a, a pervious roof.
So Bob, it's, we, we understand, then, that, that if you should go through your initial phase and not meet the 5%, you acknowledge and understand that a condition of the overall approval is still to meet the 5%.
Absolutely understand that.
Disregard whatever plan you had for the subsequent phase, and reorient it to meet the 5%. You, you would accept that condition?
We understand that, yes.
Bob, one thing, I think the, it's really up to the board, but I think we're talking 95% coverage, meaning 5% needs to be, when we say green, we mean trees or lawn or landscaping. I don't believe that pervious pavement qualifies as green. That's up to the board. Also want to point out to the board that the lawn area in front of building two, the stage area that's shown on the rendering is green, would be about between 7,000 and 8,000 square feet, which is almost double the, um, the 5% that's required. So just in doing that lawn area for building number two, they've met their green space requirement.
And, and we anticipate that there are going to be other areas where there will be the, the true definition of green, uh, the tree plantings in pavement areas, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. We're probably going to talk a little bit more about that, but go on.
Fine. Um, item number three, uh, I believe in your plan set, you have, uh, the lighting and the landscaping plan separated, uh, so that, that's an additional sheet. We, we took that information and divided it into two sheets. Uh, item number four is a, is a question or a statement that the, the board is, uh, advocating more landscaping. Um, we handed out, or submitted to you today, some photographs of, uh, areas within the city of Rochester, which are, are urban in nature. Uh, there's, uh, travel lanes, uh, on-street parking, curb, and then sidewalk that runs from the curb to the face of the building. Uh, the, the idea of foundation plantings is typically associated with suburban architecture as opposed to urban architecture, and this project is going to have an, uh, urban feel, and we believe that there's adequate landscaping depicted.
These trees, I would say, are probably twice as dense as what you've shown there.
Uh, some of those pictures don't have trees in them.
This one does.
That, that, it does. And we, we-
That one does.
We purposely picked that, that photo with the trees, because that's the same tree that we're proposing.
And this has a lot of them right there.
Correct.
Go on.
Uh, I believe that Mr. Sodoti is prepared to present a draft agreement, uh, or a letter of understanding that outlines the, the intent of the agreement between I Square and the House of Guitars. Uh, I, you would, if you'd like him to come forward now to address that, that would be fine, if you'd like to-
I think, just for continuity, just continue in your presentation.
Okay. Uh, item number six, the historic house. It's our understanding that the subject house is not on the list of historic structures, and, uh, it's our intent to demolish the building. Site plan review and supplemental checklist deficiencies. Uh, I'm not certain of this, but I can maybe validate it with you here. Uh, we submitted our original checklist back in December. I believe that that was the last time the checklist was submitted. Uh, since that time, a significant amount of additional information has been provided. It would have been, uh, wise had we submitted a revised checklist each time that we submitted additional information, because the number of items on the checklist would have, that were deficient, would have continually decreased. Um, I believe that you have information with regards to the start of construction and the completion of the construction, regarding hours of operation. completion of the construction, regarding hours of operation. We certainly will provide signature blocks on all of the drawings if they're not currently on there. I believe that we filled out the missing site data block information. The location of utility easements are not provided. All of the utilities that we're proposing are within the right-of-way and have not identified any easements that are required. It is possible that the Rochester Gas and Electric will require an easement, but they have not done their design because they will not undertake a design of those infrastructures until we have a preliminary approval from the town. The location of snow storage areas, dumpsters, this information has been added to the drawings. We're proposing to deal with the signage on the project as a separate issue. We haven't finalized the signage. That'll be something we'll have to work out with the town as the project is developed. We're proposing no outside storage or display. This is not a commercial activity in the sense that we would need to put out displays of windshield washer fluid or garden mulch. That's not those kinds of activities here. We have provided elevation showing the height and design features of the materials. The project architect is present. We have examples of the construction materials that we'd be happy to show with, share with you and show you. Floor plans have been provided. Erosion control, I believe that you'll find that these drawings now have silt fence and inlet protection and the best practices associated with erosion control. Construction fencing, construction fencing is kind of an amoeba. It is continually changing. As certain parts of the project get finished, we will remove construction fencing. As other parts start, we'll have to add construction fencing. Item number eight, under Section Three, acre of disturbance and the need for a stormwater pollution prevention plan. This project is a redevelopment as opposed to a new development. This is not a virgin site. It's my interpretation of the stormwater regulations that if the, on a previously developed site, if the proposed disturbance is less than six inches greater than the pavement section, that that area is not included in the calculation of the area of disturbance. So we need to have some ongoing conversations with the town, but a stormwater pollution prevention plan may in fact not be required. If it is required, we certainly are going to provide it. We have been in touch with Monroe County's 911 emergency services network. We're trying to identify street names that are acceptable to them. As you know, if there's a similar name for an existing street, they won't let you have that name for your new street. Rather than submit a name and then have them send it back is rejected, and submit another name and have them send it back is rejected. What you do in reality is to have a conversation with these people. You put forth a few names and they get back to you, and when they, when you come across a name that's acceptable to both, then you make formal application for that name, and we will do that. That's the extent of your letter. We have received comments from Monroe County Department of Transportation. They are in concurrence with the recommendations and conclusions of our traffic report. Basically, the thing that needed to be changed was the radius on the curb coming off of Titus Avenue onto Cooper Road Extension, and I believe that the plans that you have before you reflect that. And we have received feedback from the town's development services people indicating that they support our conclusions with regards to the storm drainage, and I believe that we've essentially put that topic to rest.
Are you saying we got dumpster enclosure details, as mundane as that appears to be?
I believe that there's a masonry dumpster detail, enclosure detail in your plan set. It would be in the construction details. It would be one of the latter sheets. I believe that one of the previous meetings, there was some question raised with regards to the plan set that was prepared for the Monroe County Department of Transportation. The work within the right-of-way of Titus Avenue was the subject of an 11-page set of drawings that are associated withdrawing the building permit from them. That's work that is not depicted in the plan set for the I-Square project proper.
So you're proposing split-phase blocks for the dumpster enclosure?
I believe that that's what that detail shows, yes.
Do we have any split-phase block on the other, on the building?
We, at the time that we put that together, we weren't certain what all of the exterior materials were going to be for all of the buildings in phase, in the entire project. If it's your desire to have the dumpster associated with Building One, have it match the exterior materials of Building One, we would be happy to do that. A subsequent building may be a different masonry product, and we would then match that dumpster enclosure to that building.
I think in general, we prefer the dumpster enclosures to be blending in with the architecture prevalent in the area.
I think that that's a reasonable expectation and could be a condition of approval.
I also didn't see a second floor plan in our plan set.
I'm not sure that they know what the second floor, the mix of the uses on the second floor is going to be.
I don't think that would preclude us from preliminary approval, but it might from final, so just, we'll probably have more information by then.
If a second floor plan for Building Number One is required at this time, we will have to provide that, but it's going to probably be our best guess as to what's going to happen on the second floor, because those spaces aren't leased.
Isn't it a mix of apartments and a meeting room?
It has the potential to be used for residential and commercial. It might be an office. It might be some professional office kind of activity.
Uses aren't completely set for this building then? It could go, there could be no apartments in the building?
That is correct. I don't believe that they have firmed up that there's definitely going to be apartments on the second floor of Building Number One. Okay.
At this point, does anyone from the board have questions just for continuity purposes of Mr. Kiefer before we move on to others to present?
I probably have other questions, but just a quick one, Mr. Kiefer. The flagpole, lighting for the flagpole, it shows that all the lighting is within requirements regarding the spill onto the property next to it. But what I'm wondering is, is what, are you going to be pointing that light up towards the flagpole, I assume?
That's my understanding, yes.
Is it going to be blocked somehow from spilling into the apartment windows and the like, just to the south?
The light will need to be shielded so a point source of light cannot be seen from the adjacent properties. I think this is going to be a shielded laser-type beam that will shine correctly on the flag.
It looks like an LED light from the description of the lights that you got, but there isn't any shielding that's indicated on the light that, on there, so it's just something else that we're going to, I think it's a reasonable condition is to make sure that the light, that light has shielding so that it doesn't shine onto the apartments to the south. Is that okay with you?
That seems appropriate.
That's all I have for questions right now, Mr. Chairman.
Does anyone else have any questions of Mr. Kiefer, Mr. Plukas?
I do, and I might be jumping ahead a little bit, but since we are addressing the preliminary overall site plan approval, it was brought up at the last meeting. I still have serious reservations about Building Seven, the western edge of Building Seven, and what looks like there's a creation of an alleyway between the existing one-story masonry building and, that is not part of this project, and the new Building Seven. And I just, I think we really need to be sure that that gets addressed, because it creates safety issues, it's unsightly, and I think we have to be sure that that is being addressed with any future planning.
I think that the applicant will be aware of that, but I don't believe that that's going to be part of our approval tonight if we say, should give it.
We're proposing a building, Number Seven, as part of our preliminary, our request for preliminary approval. The exact size of that, the exact configuration of that, we do not know. By that time, additional properties may be purchased, and that, that area will be reconfigured differently. But if the, if the issue is having a narrow alley between Building Seven and the building to the west, we would have to provide some type of fence or gate or whatever to prevent people from getting into that alleyway. Without owning the property immediately to the west, we could not build zero lot line, so we would have to hold it some small distance away.
I think the point is that in the future, we're going to be, I realize that this is a concept plan, that we feel that there's some issues with that concept of that building, and it's going to need to be addressed at the time that building comes before us.
We consider it to be beyond the concept stage, and we're seeking preliminary approval, but we absolutely agree that when we come back before you for final, that there may be modifications that are required by this board, or may be modifications that the developer will want to make in order to make it more ideal.
That makes sense.
Thank you.
Anything else, Rich?
No.
Ray?
Just a quick question, Bob. I thought there were supposed to be some landscaping shown around the flagpole, that area and along. Could be mistaken. Help me, maybe my memory is along Stranahan to protect, for example, visual from particular houses in this development. I thought that's what we had discussed back in November.
From my perspective, we have added and taken out landscaping numerous times.
I'm just asking, I thought that's what we had discussed back then. I thought that was...
We look forward to some more direction from this board.
And I don't see it now. That's why I'm asking.
We have tried to summarize our understanding of the issues associated with landscaping and to reflect that on the drawings. If we have not interpreted that correctly, then we need to have further discussion.
Thanks, Bob.
That's one of the areas where I'm fine with not having more landscaping around it.
I'm just asking.
We are on the same page.
I thought that was included back in November. I just wanted to make sure.
I'm going to go to Bernie. She looks ready.
Mr. Kiefer, thank you for answering the questions regarding the checklist. That was very helpful. I have a process question. So the signage, we don't know because they don't know what it's going to be. What is the process for approval when they do know?
They'll have to come back before us and present their signage, and we'll have to vet it.
For each sign or for what?
It depends on whether he comes in with one concept or one space at a time.
The reason I ask is, because I've seen us go through very strict reviews of people's signs.
And the Muck District even provides you with a more demanding review.
Right.
So that's probably the reason.
I mean, I believe in the past, we encouraged them to come in with their signed concepts. They're not ready with that right now, so they'll have to come before us again when they...
That's precisely the fact. We are not yet prepared to put forward our, our signed concept for the entire project. It will not be our intent to come back to this board for every sign, but we will come back to this board for the signs for Phase One as soon as we have an understanding internally of what style of sign we would like to use for the entire project.
It would be good, one signed concept.
Thank you. That's it.
I'm good right now.
Michael?
I'm good, thank you.
Why don't we open it up to your next presenter?
Okay, I would just add one further comment to a question that was raised with regards to the traffic generation and the difference on our environmental assessment form of 191 and 214 or 216. We interpreted the form to be the trips generated by our project, and we calculated that to be 191. The 216 number in the traffic report was the number of trips generated by our project plus the trips that are generated by the adjacent properties that would still use that intersection, that are outside of I-Square. 216 in there, 191 in there. Makes no difference whether or not it is a significant impact or not, but I believe that that form was correct. Would Mr. Sedoti like to speak to the board with regards to your and our understanding of the relationship and the agreement between I-Square and the House of Guitars?
My name is Frank Sedoti, office at 1215 Alliance Building, Rochester. I'm the attorney for the House of Guitars. I can report that we have reached an agreement with the various parties with respect to the concerns we had. And as you know, our concerns are mostly addressed in the Phase One approval, and we understand that that includes the relocation of Union Park to, or the abandonment of Union Park and the relocation of the Cooper Road Extension. Our primary concern was that we had a separate access to the House of Guitars that was freestanding and dedicated to the town. And the reports I have and what's been, we have discussed is that in Phase One, it will include the closing of Union Park and the relocation of the Cooper Road Extension and the construction of the new road between Cooper Road Extension and our parking lot. And it'll be a 24-foot wide pavement as shown on the plans, and we understand that there will be parking adjacent to that new road that's being constructed, and that the town will be involved in that parking, that it's going to be under a license agreement with the developer, and that's fine with us. It will lead directly to our parking lot. The other thing we were concerned with in the beginning was that the initial plan showed cross-easements between the developer's property and the parking lot of the House of Guitars at the Music Store, and those have been eliminated, those cross-easements have been eliminated. Our parking lot will be solely owned by the House of Guitars, and it will be ours exclusively. We understand that during the development process, the developer will be entering onto our property to do work there and do some paving there, and that work is subject to the town approval, and that there will be some temporary easements that we'll have to enter into with the developer to allow him to come onto our property and do that. And we also understand that anything that's done to our property that is not paving would require our consent between the developer and the House of Guitars. With that out of the way, we don't have any other, any other objections to the project.
Well, the work, the scope of work as I see it on your property, your client's property, excuse me, I mean, they're building a nine-foot sidewalk up against the building, they're curbing the parking lot, they're constructing a number of parking stalls.
Well, they're not constructing parking stalls, they're just...
Well, there's some significant modifications, I would think, to your parking area.
I believe if you look at our Phase One plan, the Phase One line is on the backside of the curb. I believe if you look at the, look at the Phase One plan, you'll find that the limit is drawn along the backside of the curb.
The nine feet of sidewalk is not your responsibility?
That's correct. The House of Guitars is going to have to, or may need to, change the sidewalk arrangement to go to that door. They may or may not put concrete along this entire length. They may or may not have our contractor, the contractor for I-Square, participate in that work. But the limits of the Phase One work is the backside of the curb, and yes, we will be putting this curb in, and we will be paving these areas, and we will be striping it so that those parking spaces could be made available to the House of Guitars.
Are those handicap stalls in front of the House of Guitars necessary for the House of Guitars purposes or for the purposes of I-Square?
Those are needed for, those are replacing the handicap parking spaces that are there.
Okay.
And the handicap parking spaces that are required by the I-Square project are complied with, with the individual buildings. This parking is not included in our parking count. Those are the House of Guitars parking spaces.
So those eight, 10, 14 stalls?
I'll trust your count.
I wouldn't, but I think that's right.
I don't know exactly where the line is on this, on this site plan. It's shown on the, on the Phase One... It's shown on the, on the Phase One.
So, Mr. Sedoti, your client is fully aware and cognizant of their responsibilities subsequent to this site plan?
It's our parking lot after it's been reconstructed in accordance with your wishes. I understood that the board wanted the paving to match on both parking lots so that it was more aesthetic looking, and we consent that they can come onto our property and do that, but it's our parking lot, and we understand that in the future, we would have to maintain it.
Bob, grades are such that you're not, you have to tear that paving out in order to make grade work?
We established the height of the curb based on the threshold of the door with, at the House of Guitars Music Store. So yes, the finished surface pavement area is going to be lower when we're done than it is today, slightly. So the answer to your question is yes, we're going to take that pavement out and then put it back in.
Are we adding any drainage structures in that area?
The entire parking lot is a closed drainage system, and that was included in our calculations for storm drainage. There is one other element of work that is not depicted on this plan, and that is that the sanitary lateral for the House of Guitars used to run out, or today runs out to Union Park. When we relocate the sewer in Union Park over to the Cooper Road Extension, we are going to need to extend their sanitary lateral to the new sewer, and that lateral is going to be extended along the dedicated right of way, so it does not need an easement.
The agreement that each of you has just enumerated will be reduced to a signed memorialization, correct?
Yes.
And I would suggest that you have that document completed prior to your appearance before the Aronikoid Town Board for the abandonment of the roadway.
When is that meeting?
I'm not sure.
That's the 23rd of this month. And your client, Mr. Sedoti, would feel comfortable with approvals being granted by this board with the state of your agreement at this point?
Yes, yes, we don't have a problem with that.
Mr. Sedoti and I did discuss that as well. I don't think it is legally impracticable for you to grant the approvals on the condition that that agreement be reduced to writing and approved by the town staff.
It's our understanding that the Phase One approval that you're granting covers the relocation of, or the abandonment of Union Park and the relocation with a separate road that's going to be dedicated to the town, and that's part of, as long as that's part of Phase One, then we're happy.
If you, if this board weren't inclined to grant an approval, I assume that it would be conditioned upon Town Board granting approval for the abandonment, because this project doesn't move ahead if that doesn't happen on the 23rd.
Again, doesn't have to be rededicated? Nope?
No.
At no other time, it doesn't have to be rededicated?
I believe so.
Okay, so that's not a condition?
No, the Town Board may, I can't speak for the Town Board and how they're going to want to implement any conditions with regard to the abandonment, but for the purposes of this project, simply making it a condition that there be a written agreement between the parties and that the Town Board sign off on the abandonment of Union Park would be sufficient.
And I assume that that agreement will be filed with the filing of the plat, which would create the, legalize this subdivision.
Right. The other thing for the board and for people is, the existing Union Park, probably the most important thing is it be cut off up at Titus Avenue, so people aren't driving down there, but until building number two and building number seven are built, you can in fact have two parallel streets, 85 feet apart. And as we've discussed in the past, that the existing Union Park is not going to be, we'll say, abandoned until the new Union Park is serviceable.
That is our intent.
And so that could be sometime actually this July or August, when the official abandonment in that street disappears.
You say serviceable though, Larry. Serviceable is different than?
Subject Commissioner of Public Works and the Fire Marshal.
He's mean. But serviceable meaning dedicated, has to be dedicated back. The new road has to be dedicated back, is that what you're saying?
I believe that's what I'm saying, that Pat's going to take it under dedication. Normally, that happens after your binder is down.
Is that what, is that what you're saying to Pat?
I believe that the Cooper Road Extension will come into use before it is dedicated, that it will be brought to a standard which is acceptable to the Highway Department so that it's safe for the traveling public, but may not be 100% complete and suitable for offering for dedication. The putting the top course on that road may not occur until building number one is nearly done. It might be a year later.
There may be a temporary dedication that allows it to be used before, you know, full dedication.
And that's not unusual.
Okay.
Are we saying though, that Union Park is not going to, is going to stay open until, it's definitely going to stay open until the other road's dedicated, but after that road's dedicated, is it still going to stay open until it has to be closed? Or is it going to, is it going to be closed at that point?
I'll let Bob address this further, but when you build the new intersection, Monroe County DOT is going to want the existing T eliminated as quickly as possible. Having it running where it is down in the south part of the project, running off Stranahan, is really not a huge issue, but I'll leave that up to the Commissioner of Public Works and, you know, the engineers to figure out when, in the construction of the parking lot, because if you picture it, that parking lot is going to take up a good piece of the road too. So upward building seven is, you're going to get rid of it, so you can't go in and out at Titus. In the middle of the project, it's going to turn into a parking lot, and in the south end of the project, it's going to basically turn into some seated, temporary seating where building number two in the future stage area goes.
How is that all going to work with Bay Goodman still being, I'm assuming, in existence, and abandonment of that road and closing that off? Do we have a site plan that shows how that's going to work with the?
We will not take Union Park out until there's a means to access the House Guitars via the new dedicated roadway.
And we have that shown on C1, the overall preliminary Phase One plan?
Yes.
Okay. So we have that covered.
I'm good with that.
That was more complex.
Any other questions of Mr. Sedoti before we ask the next presenter to before us? Back to you and whomever you wish to.
Thank you. Rob, would you like to assess the exterior finishes of the building?
Good evening, Rob Meehan, Meehan Architecture, Town Assembly Drive, Town Amendment. You've seen this rendering here for the last few months. I'll move it forward here so everyone can see it. The Nolan's intent on the building is to make this thing look like it was built in the 30s and 40s in an urban setting. The concept involved with it, with the two-story and the future three-story buildings, is to have tightly close buildings with retail space, commercial space on the lower floors, with the mom-and-pop apartments upstairs or the small offices upstairs. Again, as was discussed earlier, the decision on the second floor has not been made yet. We have floor plans showing apartments, and we have floor plans showing office space, so it's a matter of which one they find tenants for. I think it's going to be more the driving force. The exterior of the building will be constructed, or the shell of the building will be a steel-framed building, it'll have a metal backup system, but the entire exterior will be of a masonry product, whether it be a clay brick or a cast stone on the wainscot bottom of it. The intent is to pick up elements of the surrounding buildings and their brick and stone and incorporate them into the building, so not only this project, but the buildings that are surrounding it that were built in the area, that he's trying to match, blend with it also. So it won't be, you're going to come down the road and see this thing, it will, the intent is to build it into what's already there. Saying that is, the stonework on the bottom wainscot of the building will be large cast stone, probably in the 12 to 12 by 20 dimensional stone, similar to what's on the House of Guitars now, with a rough concrete finish, the brick material. This is a sample of the stone. The bottom part would be in the earth tone of the dark grayish, brown types.
The work out, huh?
The bricks also will be period style, they will be rough, multi-colored bricks, with the intent that they would not be glazed, they would be a tool, mortar joint in them, typical of the era that the 30s and 40 buildings were built in. The two color variations on the building would be to divide up the building, so because of the size of the facade on it, knowing that most urban areas weren't built all at once, they were broken up into separate buildings and built next to each other. Most of them, if you see now, have a common wall between them, obviously this wouldn't, but the idea being that one looks like it was built at a different time than the other. So there will be two types, color variations to the bricks for each section of the building, but the brick type would be similar. We're also talking about doing a engineered larger style brick, a utility brick, which is like a four by 12 size brick or a six by 12 brick versus a nominal engineered brick, which would be like a two and a quarter by eight inch brick. So there'd be a variation between them. The base of the buildings along the storefronts would have a wood panel type mold look, they would probably be more of a prefinished, no maintenance facade, where you would have the storefront doors, the base below the storefront windows would have a panel mold system, similar to what you see on any type of building that you would walk down in an urban area, with the windows being fixed, grills. Again, with the period style, the second floor windows would be replicas of double-hung windows that you would see in that style building with the grills and mullions to match, precast lintels and sills.
Replicas being that they will not function?
They, depends on the use. If it's apartment use up there, they will have to function. If they're office type use, they may or may not function. The lower level windows will not function. And the door systems would be, on the facade side of the building, the west side of the building, would be a wood door. The doors going into the backside of the building would be wood doors and commercial type metal frames. As I said, most of the lintels, the lintels, the sills, there'll be soldier coursing, coins on the brick corners. There'd be quite a bit of dentil molding that we'll be doing up at the top of the building to match, or not to match, to replicate some of the detailing that was done in the period also.
Wouldn't the north side, the Aronikoid Hots, want some more windows on that side?
Well, the problem that we have with that one, there'll be a lot line in there eventually, and between building one and building four, which would only give, there's 15 feet there now, there'd only give seven and a half feet between the lot lines, and there's issues with the building code that will dictate the amount of square footage of opening that we'd be able to have. So as of now, we had a meeting with them, they didn't, they, there will be booths along that side of the window, or along that side of the wall, and there will be an access door for them on that side as well, for parking in the rear, for people that come down that alley. Because again, that alley is intended for cross-traffic from the parking lot in the back to come to the main part of the park.
It'd be better to give it a little room so you could, between the buildings, I mean, the square footage of the building could be the same, so that that facade could have some additional windows. I mean, until the interim, that building's going to look almost vacant when you come down Cooper Road Extension, because of the fact that there's not going to be anything articulating that facade.
True, but when the other building's built, it'll be looking into a brick wall.
Unless it's backed off a bit and there's more area to the alleyway.
It could be, although the requirements right now don't really, they don't need it.
And you say that that door is going to be an entrance into the building, and now it's just a solid metal door, fire-rated door?
No, the ones on the side, we're, because of the setback, we will be able to have the doors, have glass in them, be a wood door. The one door going into the fire stairwell would most likely be a paneled metal door.
I thought you said there was a door into Aronikoid Hots on the north side, but now I look at the plan and there's not.
There should be two doors next to each other, one going into Aronikoid Hots and one going into the stairwell.
There's not, and it's not on the elevation?
It is not on that elevation. It's correct, it's not on that elevation, it is on the floor plan.
I would like eventually, before we give final approval, the material indications on the elevations?
Yes.
The exact materials, please.
So just so I understand, looking at the north elevation of what will become I Hots, there's actually going to be two doors on the right side of that building, and then the double doors in the back for access to the second floor?
Double doors to the back.
In the back of the building?
That is actually, that's the set of doors that's all the way back at this point.
Correct.
Yes. So, and that's why it looks a little light, lighter colored than the?
But on the front area for I Hots, there's going to be two doors, a fire door, right.
Yeah, that door will not go directly into I Hots, it is directly to the stairwell.
And there's one next to it, you said, that goes into I Hots, it's not shown, correct?
It's not shown on the elevation, it's shown on the floor plan.
Not shown on my floor plan. Could you show me where that is on the floor plan?
On this one right here, you see is the, you see the door that goes? You have the wrong plan. I apologize, I must have sent Anthony the wrong plan today. There is a door directly to the west of that that goes directly into I Hots.
What's going to be the use of the basement?
Storage for each tenant, and I Square will also have a space in there for the common maintenance of the entire facility, and there will also be plant, mechanical plant equipment down there as well.
So that'll be occupiable space?
It'll be occupiable space. Not in terms of general use, there'd be no, there are no plans to put anything down there in terms of a business use, it would be classified as that, it'd be all classified as U, utility use, as far as the building code is concerned. Yeah, actually, Anthony just mentioned, the floor plan that I did send him CAD wise, is the overlay onto the site plan for Phase One, does show the tenant configuration in the doors.
What drawing number is that?
It's the enlargement one, the one that shows the building one enlargement.
32?
Seven.
This drawing, drawing four of 13, upper left corner, you see the entry and the door into the stairwell, and then adjacent to it, a door coming out of leased space number four, which is Aronikoid Hots.
Our subdivision map currently shows all of building one and four, five, and six on one piece of property. Does that mean that that's going to be divided into other properties in the future? Right now, the subdivision map shows one piece of property that encompasses building one, four, five, and six, correct? But now we're talking about that it's going to be further subdivided in the future?
I'm sure it's going to be, depending on how the funding mechanisms come together. If you want to put mortgage on a piece of property, you might have it be simple. If it's internally financed, it would not need to be subdivided.
The blow-up plan kind of intimates a property line, I think, also in that area, but.
But that may be the phase one.
All right. That could be right. Correct.
The code similarly addresses buildings on one lot and their proximity to each other, which are very similar to the proximity of a property line also.
Right. I just think there's maybe a lost opportunity there for some additional daylighting into the building, but that's, I guess, up to the applicant. Any questions? And is there any way that we could get the building two, our building one, second floor plan options so that we can just see what they look like?
Absolutely.
Was not aware that they were changing, potentially changing the uses up there, does that affect anyone's? Any comments about going to all offices or all apartments?
I think it's probably just whatever occupant comes in is what, they're gonna customize the second floor and that may change. You give it five years of four dental offices and it might become something else. I think the interior of buildings today change.
I think in general, there's been some negative, I mean, I wouldn't call them, I guess, some comments against apartments, so if that was offices, I don't think that that would be a big negative to me.
Apartments or offices?
Offices would not be a negative to me.
Nor would an apartment be to me.
Yeah, so...
No, I don't, I don't, I don't, either way is fine.
I mean, we would allow the applicant and the flexibility to...
I would like them to have that flexibility of being able to adapt to whatever the market is bringing to them. I mean, he's certainly not gonna leave it barren and if he finds it, as he said, to be luxurious apartments and they make a goal, but God bless.
I think it'd be good just to memorialize the two concepts as part of the application process, please.
We will.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Meehan before he steps down? Anyone? Left side of me, right side of me? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very nice looking building.
Thank you.
Good job.
Are there others that you would like to hear from?
I know you said that HIP was gonna come before us and speak to their review. I don't know that it's necessary or unnecessary, it's at your discretion.
At your preference.
Anyone?
I think the submission is pretty thorough and I appreciate that.
I think it speaks to itself.
Very much.
Okay. Okay. All right. I'm gonna get back to then some of the issues with the land, Steve, you stay up there. I still feel like there's some opportunities that I, for additional landscaping and the photos that you showed me are, to me, exactly indicative of exactly what we've been just being described all along, the tree scape, the hard scape, the movable planters, but I really just don't see it memorialized in the Phase One plan. I really think that the density of landscaping is lacking in this and I don't think it's gonna, I think it's gonna be very stark and very, I don't think it's gonna portray the spirit to which I think that this thing is being portrayed in. You know, the building next to it, building, sorry, building two has foundation plantings along Stranahan Park, building one has none. I think the density of the trees along Cooper Road Extension or Baker Street is not to which you're showing in some of these photos. You know, I think that there's, I don't know why you wouldn't want some foundation plantings or something along the north side or the east side of building one to create a more hospitable environment for your second floor tenants. I mean, I don't really see that there's any street amenities over there that would preclude you from, you know, having additional landscaping and I just don't understand why we couldn't see a little bit more. I think this is a precedent setting building, a precedent for the project, it's setting the model for which we're gonna develop in the future.
Your vision of this project is slightly different than the vision of my clients.
I understand. So that's a line in the sand, the amount of landscaping we see is it and that's it?
I did not draw that line in the sand. I would like to have a little more feedback from the board.
Did I, I tried to look at these drawings very carefully, but I didn't see any benches or anything on any of them today.
I did tell them that's what I want.
Did I, did I miss them or?
I, well, the attorney's telling me to say exactly, I would like more trees and some foundation landscaping and you're so...
And I perceive you to be one of the board members on the board and if the others were not supportive of that position, I'd let it go to a vote.
Okay. Does anyone else disagree with my position?
I would like to hear what the other members of the board feel with regards to the amount of landscaping that's depicted on the plan.
I agree with Peter, I think it's sparse, especially considering the trees. Right now, at 2.2 acres, I believe, we have 15 trees planted. When the caliper, these trees, especially when they're first put in, are gonna be relatively small, I think it's gonna look pretty stark.
Bernie?
I agree with Peter too and like he stated, building two shows plantings. I don't know why you wouldn't do it on building one.
Building two is a residential apartment building.
Building one may have residents on the second floor.
That's true, with a commercial downstairs, having foundation plantings and the possibility of having...
Well, then add some street trees along Stranahan Park. I mean, I'm asking for more landscaping and if you're telling you're coming with no options to us. Michael, how about you, how do you feel about the landscaping?
Well, I certainly would.
Pull your mic around a little closer, please.
I certainly would like to see more, but I don't, I'm not following where you conceived it could go.
Well, for instance, along Cooper Road Extension, I mean, you could add trees in between most of those trees. Or along Stranahan, I can show you actually a drill.
For the board, I can appreciate...
And I don't think this is gonna hold up preliminary approval, but it might hold up final, and I think it's something they need to consider.
For the board, I can appreciate the argument that in the urban setting, that foundation plantings similar to this corner of Park and Berkeley, University and Gibbs Street down by the Eastman, there are no foundation plantings, but there are more street trees and I think that's what, one of the things that our department has indicated, that street trees, I think you got a 12-foot wide sidewalk on Stranahan and there would be room for the standard five by five tree pits, which would add a little bit of foil to the southern elevation of that building.
So you're saying the town would put them in?
Well, I mean, it's the town's right of way, so Department of Public Works could put in street trees if they wanted to. But I, my point is that street trees are one thing in an urban environment, foundation plantings are something else and it's not commonly seen.
I'm throwing out options and...
Okay.
Jay, how do you feel about the landscaping?
I agree that we should, I'd like to see more trees and I didn't see any benches either. I thought there was gonna be a couple of benches along there as well, so I don't see any of that, so I definitely think that the number of trees are lacking along Cooper Road Extension and I'd also like to see it along the road to the east if we could.
I understand what Mr. Nolan's trying to accomplish in the urban setting, but at the same time, it's a multi-use district and there's gonna be people living in the area and using the area for businesses and I think there needs to be more plantings.
Ray?
I agree with everyone else and I agree with Mr. Ritchie. Even in reading Ms. Ekren's report as it relates to this particular special district, she talked about benches and so forth, they're not reflected. We were told that there would be plantings in between building seven and, forgive me now, I forget which space that is, but...
The parking lot?
The parking, thank you, but it's not reflected, it was before, now it's not.
Well, I'm not even worried about that.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that either, yeah.
I'm more concerned about just Phase One.
That is outside the limits of Phase One.
Right.
So you will have another look at that.
Right to Phase One.
Bob, that's very good, but I also mentioned before, along Stranahan Park and, you know, I thought that was done in November, that we had agreed to some sort of plantings along that area and now they're not there.
I did tell them I want more trees.
I appreciate your position.
Thank you.
The consensus is that we want more trees.
I heard that consensus.
Right.
Is that something we can approve, the overall plan, subject to the...
Give preliminary plan, approval and then final approval would have to, we'd have to see an improvement to the landscaping situation.
And could that be subject to the town officials' approval or does that have to go before the full board?
Well, they gotta come back here anyway.
They have to come back here anyway. And I think even if there's gonna be benches that you don't know what they indicate or where they are, I think there should be like a dash line on the site line, plan that says future bench location.
Do we have the option of indicating that we will provide X number of benches and that we'll select the locations of those as the building is, project is developed?
Absolutely. And that should probably be coordinated with the Commissioner of Public Works in any of it.
Right, I mean, there's, there are some unresolved issues as exactly how the flow of people is going to occur in these buildings and we would not want to have to take a cast in place bench and move it.
I think that's exactly the spirit to which we've been asking for also, even like up near building seven, which is now off the table. All we really said was we would, I Square will put in four trees and movable planters, location to be determined, you know, that type of indication is fine with us.
Okay.
But I don't think we need to even deal with that right now because we now are into the situation where we have a, basically an approval line and when building seven comes along, we'll be hashed through that.
That's correct, you will get an opportunity for the seven again.
Everything that you've shown about the typical urban environment, streetscapes is absolutely gorgeous and I think that the density is twice what you're proposing along that street. All streets. And I'm not necessarily advocating, just what I was trying to say with this foundation plantings is that I'm not necessarily asking for street trees. If they wanna add some foundation plantings along different facades in lieu of that or added some trees on other facades, I think that's the spirit to which we're looking for it, but I'm not dictating unless we want, if the only thing that you're willing to give is street trees, then fine, then we will dictate the number of street trees.
Understood.
I'm gonna come to Bob's rescue here for a second. I pulled out the engineering scale. The spacing of the locust is about 60 feet on center, which is a pretty good spacing for a tree of that size, which is why Anthony spec'd that tree because it will grow to a...
How many years does it take to get to that size?
I'll let Anthony answer that. But if the trees were smaller, like flowering cherry, flowering crab, then you would have a tighter spacing, but if you think of a typical city street or a traditional lot of about 50 feet, you normally have about one tree every 50 feet. So for these to be honey locusts on a 60-foot spacing, you really wouldn't wanna double them up, you'd have to go to a smaller tree to tighten those up to a 40-foot spacing. Again, that's only on the relocated Union Park, not, not bringing Stranahan.
Right.
And then these red oaks that are running along Titus, those are also going in on about a 50-foot spacing in front of building number seven and that will be a pretty continuous canopy when those trees are mature.
Twenty-five years from now.
Well, the red, no, the red oak will mature faster, the canopy from the, from the locust is, it's not dense anyway, but...
Maybe we look to a larger caliber tree?
That's a possibility. I just wanted to point out what the actual spacing was and that it's, it's not as bleak as it may be sounding, but Stranahan currently doesn't have any trees and there is the opportunity for smaller trees along Stranahan.
Well, I do think if, I mean, if this is a presentation of their vision, the 60-foot tree on center locust that grows 25 years from now is not...
I would agree.
This is depicting.
Right.
If you really wanted to see what the locust would look like in about 10 years, go to the Gibbs Street in front of the coffee house there, picture, lower right. Those are locusts, are they not?
The trees depicted on the Gibbs Street map are actually, in front of Javis, which is the image that's shown there, those trees are actually in planters. They don't actually have trees planted in the actual tree pits on that particular street. But just around the corner from that location on East Avenue between Swan Street and Saddle Street, the Sagamore and East Building was constructed in 2005. Now, that building, when it was built, there were mature honey locusts along that block stretch of East Avenue. The mature trees were removed as part of construction of that seven-story masonry building and then when the building was completed, six new honey locusts were planted as mitigation, new street trees. They're in urbanized street pits and so now five years later, they've actually grown a significant amount for that short amount of time because they are a fast growing tree. Now, in a lawn area, honey locusts might get to a width of 40, 45 feet. In an urbanized setting like this, in a, you know, restricted pit that has more dense urban type conditions, it is maybe sometimes slower growing, but these trees will tend to arch now over the street. Larry has mentioned on the phone with me in past conversations that there's a stretch of Park Avenue that has a canopy of honey locust on either side and they do in time create a very nice leafy canopy that allows sunlight to filter through. If we were to go to a smaller tree, something like a pear or a crab apple, something like that, that would allow us to put them closer together, you may not get that kind of leafy canopy that arches over the street, which might be the ultimate goal of the look here. Given that they're spaced 60 feet apart, I think within 10 years' time, if, if a three and a half inch caliber tree, you know, gets a 20-foot spread on it, you're gonna, those trees aren't gonna necessarily touch one another, but I don't think they need to necessarily touch one another in order to have that, that kind of filtered sun canopy type feel that, that is being looked for. Also, it's important to point out that there are, all the light poles are located between each of these trees. It's spaced kind of in a symmetrical fashion so that there's a light pole tree, light pole tree and if too dense of a canopy is created, it may have a negative effect on the illumination at night from those poles. The only other thing I do wanna point out that we did change that hasn't been mentioned as yet is this pavement strip that the trees are planted and then the light poles are located in. We did identify in greater detail on the plans that were sent today that that is to be a stamped concrete. One of the comments that was in the planning board letter previously asked what that was to be. So we did identify that, but the ultimate feel for this streetscape is that there's this four-foot wide decorative stamped pavement, concrete pavement that has a light pole and a street tree in a kind of symmetrical fashion all the way down the street, those, you know, so that when you look down it, you do ultimately get that canopy and then the decorative light poles.
From my, from my perspective, since I was, I think, the only guy on the board that didn't say, yeah, let's do some more plantings, I like the locusts because it is not dense. I think if we went to a smaller tree, a flowering tree, something half the size eventually, I think it, it would take away some of the aesthetics of a taller tree on a taller building. I mean, if this were a one-story building, I would say, plant something smaller, something that's not gonna mature that, that kind of height and put them closer together. But I wanted, I personally would, if I were allowed to plant, I would plant something that would grow more towards the optimum height of the building, that would create the canopy not only for the street, but also for the tenants. So I like the locusts and I think the spacing's okay, huh?
Is that what we have now, in your opinion?
Yes, I think we, I think we have that now. Yeah, I mean, if he were to add one more, fine, I, you know, I, I don't know, I'm torn. You guys are the majority and I understand what you're saying, I'm just throwing out my two cents.
What about the, you know, the whole, regardless, around the rest of the building, anything you see?
Well, I, I'd hate to be the guy who had to, had to clean the sidewalk. If you, if you, you got a 12-foot sidewalk, 12-foot, it's not a humongous sidewalk, but if you put a snowball around that and you've got some small foundation plantings, they get beat up.
I think we're advocating for more trees, but I don't know if we are or not, there's more than just Cooper Road Extension, Baker Street, Stranahan Park. There's more than just Cooper Road Extension, Baker Street, Stranahan Park, and the other facades of the building.
Mike Nolan again.
What about, Peter, that's coming up with some type of compromise? I don't want them on the south side of Building One. There's a specific reason. We see looking out that Murph's side up at the flagpoles and so forth, and different features across the road that we really want the focal point drawn to. But I wouldn't object to putting two more trees adjacent to the parking lot on Stranahan, which would be east of the building. If we could add those, if we can move on and get an approval, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, that's...
That's the area here. That's right along here. We added the gardens on this parking lot from one of the prior meetings, the feedback around the parking lot. But if I could draw two more in here and move on, I'd appreciate it.
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. Two more trees right here.
You planted those already?
Well, one thing I will say is, I will say is, this is the dialogue that we've been, I think that we needed more landscaping, but you not being representative here in the past and having your people here is exactly what we needed to dialogue about this, so...
I'm happy to be here.
And I agree with your point of view now. I didn't understand the point of view when we asked, so your presence here is valuable.
Thank you.
So adding a couple of trees on the parking lot, one on the south side of Stranahan parking lot, and then one on the east side of Stranahan? I think that would look good.
Is that where he has them?
Do you want to wrap up more with the benches and say you were going to add two benches or four benches, expenses a dollar?
Four benches.
Four benches, a lawn Cooper extension?
I think I just bought two benches.
Is that four lawn Cooper extension?
Locations to be determined.
Just for Phase One?
That's correct.
Again, he's the strong salad type, but that's going to be the purview of the Commissioner of Public Works.
Right.
I think that's something that should be...
It needs to be involved, yes, but I think it's part of the site amenities that are clearly written into the ordinance that need to be included, and I think the Public Works Department needs to work around them unfortunately, as well as just to meet the nature of the ordinance.
The only other bear spot is, and I know there's a light pole there, but it's along the west side of Cooper Extension going into the parking lot where the, right there, right in the middle where that light pole is, I don't know if there's anything that you can put there to break up that large area of parking or whatever.
There's also problems associated with visibility, driving in and out.
Yeah, that's why I'm not...
Most stuff obstructs the sports car, trees until they grow up high enough to be pruned up, you can't see underneath. We chose not to put a tree there because of safety reasons.
Okay. What other questions, concerns, or comments does the board have?
When does Murph's open? I don't mean tonight.
Currently, I think it's open now, but in future. Anything else from the board to the applicant? Thank you very much.
Let's see.
What?
Oh, I had one other question, I'm sorry. Do we have anything specified about loading zones, where the loading zones are going to be for the individual buildings?
Rob, do you know where the loading zone is into Building One? How product will come into the store? Doors?
All right, board? Okay, Bob?
I just have one other question, just about loading zones, just wanted to see where it's going to...
Yeah, each individual tenant will have access to a door about the east parking lot. And that goes directly out under that sidewalk in the back, which leads them directly out to the dumpster. So all deliveries will come into that door. Currently, the cooler, the beer cooler will be down in the basement for Murph's. There's a door that accesses right directly to the stairs that they'll be able to go down to, or they can go directly into the elevator, straight into the basement, into their cooler space that'll be down there.
Thank you.
I have one other question, Bob, just to reconfirm in my own mind. Mr. Nolan had said you're going to remove snow on a daily basis, so we don't need an area for plumbing, right? After yesterday, I thought about that, you know? Just wanted to reconfirm that, because no spaces are shown.
Right.
All right, in looking at my list, and in looking at the review letter that Larry and I put together for approval, I like to poll the board a little bit, but I think that I would feel comfortable giving preliminary and final site plan approval pending a few issues. The issues that I have right now are brick masonry dumpster enclosures to match Building Conditions, high cutoff lights for flagpoles.
Mr. Chairman, I, we discussed this a little bit with Mr. O'Reilly today, but I think we all discussed it, and the conditional areas that we would be putting on, the conditions we'd be putting on this if we did preliminary and final site plan approval today would be conditional on both the Director of Development Services, the Town Attorney, and you, as Chairman of the Planning Board, agreeing that the conditions are met.
Correct.
And we're appropriate, the Commissioner of Public Works as well, but only get him involved when it's appropriate, not the rest of the time.
Pat's a good guy.
That we need Building One determination, final uses to be determined, but to that extent, second-floor plan options would be submitted for documentation purposes.
Yes.
Another condition would be town board approval of the abandonment, the approval of final access right-of-way agreement with, I said the House of Guitars, but I was looking through the papers, I think that there's another name of that property owner. I didn't come up with it quite right away, but that's what I'm indicating. I think it's in the name of some entity.
Do you want to put the actual...
Well, ultimately, it's the House of Guitars owners that need to agree, whether it's whatever entity name.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, what is it?
Rendiquitt... Rendiquitt Appliance Outlet Incorporated and Muzi Realty? Is that right? That was what was in the, in the plat.
I think that's correct.
The material indications, the exact material indications should be put on the elevations, so that we have that as part of the documentation.
Yes.
We're going to add street trees on the south of the parking lot and the east of the parking lot for total of two added trees, and an indication through notes on the drawings that there will be four future street benches and a location to be determined in the future.
In the Phase One area.
Right. Does anyone else have any other conditions to which they think that...
Lighting needs to get blocked for the flagpole.
I have that.
Yeah, you do, okay.
I cut off, up lights for flagpoles.
Okay.
Does anyone else have any conditions?
Is financing outside the purview of the board, or?
Yes.
It is.
Correct?
Yes.
Anyone else?
I think that was part of the resolution.
Would everyone, then we'll make a motion for preliminary and final approval based on those conditions?
Are you making the motion, Mr. Chairman?
I suppose I am. Now, we have this document right here that we've created. Are we immortalizing that in some way into this?
I don't think you really need to. It was only intended as a guideline, but it's there. You had some thought putting it together.
I think it, I think actually we have more resolution than I envisioned tonight, which was very positive. I think the applicant was willing to give some, we appreciate it very much. I think we had some very good dialogue, the dialogue that was necessary to get this project through. And I think to that end, the motion I made before, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Bernie, favor?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Michael? Aye.
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 So moved.
Thank you very much. Would you like a cookie?
What?
Would you like a cookie?
And again, I would like to thank the applicant for all their hard work and effort. I'm sure this was a daunting process that you're unfamiliar with. I'm sure coming before us in the future, you'll be more familiar with it.
You might not want to come back.
You know, I did, I did want to add that I did read in some of the indications in the newspapers and others that this was a contentious process, and I surely hope that that wasn't really the way this really was portrayed by press and the public.
I hope no one portrayed it that way.
Honestly, you know...
That certainly wasn't the way that I perceived it.
I didn't think so either. I think that it was...
I think the town has been very gracious and very supportive and very prompt in their replies. This is a very complex project. If I had been sitting on this board at the last meeting, I would not have voted for approval. You needed this information, we provided it to you, and we appreciate the effort that you've made tonight to move this project ahead.
Thanks, Bob. I know a lot of people have worked hard on this, but I really want to thank Larry for all that he's done on it. I really appreciate the thoroughness and the completeness and the amount of work that he's put into this. I know we all have, but Larry, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we adjourn the meeting without further business.
Do we have a second to for adjournment?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, we have no meeting then on, in two weeks?
Meeting is adjourned.
Yes, you do.
Yes.
Thank you.